Welcome to FBB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the voter, to hear directly from our candidates about the issues that are important to our community. This year is a little different as we are social distancing, so we're conducting our interviews from different locations. Also this year, we took questions via social media and through email, so we have a lot of interesting topics to get to, so let's jump right in. Today's guest is Will Privill, and he is running for city commission. Welcome, Will.
Thank you for having me, Kenny. Appreciate it.
Good thing. Now, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
You did. You did. It was right.
That's great. So let's just start by you telling us a little bit about yourself and why you've decided to run for city commission.
I'm glad to do it. So I have lived in Frankfurt. This is my 14th summer. I have about 20 some years in the public sector. It moved me around quite a bit. I do IT. And in my early career, I moved quite a bit, but I settled into Frankfurt in 2007 for a job that had brought me to several different places. And when I arrived in Frankfurt, I thought I was only going to be here for the short time that I had been in other cases. So I was surprised when I fell in love with Frankfurt and had an opportunity to extend my time here. So since then, I got married, met my wife here. We are raising two children. And recently, I think, living downtown in the house I actually purchased back in 2007, we decided to invest in our property further, even with two children in a small house. We just love where we live and we love the community. And so to answer the other side, why now? I think timing is the way I would say, to kind of synopsize why it is I'm running. Two things on that. I think knowing that there were two vacancies in the four positions was a big deal to me. Not being a guy that was born and raised in Frankfurt, I don't have a name that others may have that are in the race, just simply because I'm not from here originally. But in the probably more important part to me is that my children are at school age now. And the decisions we're making today that I think are doing really well with the growth potential for our city, and this just made the right time. It was the right fit for me to put my name under the hat to maybe participate in the decisions that will affect the futures of my kids. And of course, my wife here as well. So I think timing is the way I would say it.
Okay, great. Well, why don't you tell us about what previous experience you have that you think will lend to you being a good city commissioner?
Sure. So my career has spanned 20 years. I've had the benefit of working across different cities and counties by virtue of that, and states. So in my role, I have been focused on application development specific to state government as well as the local space as well. So I've had the ins and outs, not just that government itself, but I understand how things kind of move through the system at the local level as well. So I haven't been a politician, so to speak. I'm not big on that word in the first place. I think for me, it's more about, you know, helping our fellow citizens, making decisions that may be tough sometimes, but that's what I've had to do in my job as an IT professional. You make some tough decisions. You make budget cuts. You make determinations as to why you have to go a different way on something than everyone else is against or for. And so I have that experience across my time. So I just, I think I make a good fit for that commissioner, I mean, so.
That's what you're running for.
That's right. That's right.
So what do you think is the biggest issue facing the city commission right now? And how will you address it if elected?
Yeah, I think the biggest issue that I think comes as a surprise to all of us was back in March, you know, the COVID thing. No one saw coming, or if we did, it was kind of trickled in, and then all of a sudden, bam, it's here. I was, my wife and I had, you know, we were locked into the house together in March, April, and May. We had a lot of conversations about our concerns around, obviously, health was number one, but as things progressed and as we were taking the great precautions that our governor has put on our state, whether you disagree with him or not, there's a lot of unknowns. And the one known that we can kind of account for today is that there are a lot of people unemployed right now. And how is that going to look when the dust settles, right? And when is the dust going to settle? How long will we be, you know, unlocking things and putting people back out where jobs that once existed that don't right now, when can those come back? And how do we take care of our common, the folks around us, the folks in our area during that time? So I would say a long-winded answer, but I think that that's going to be the thing that we're going to have to kind of keep an eye on, and the implications of that. People losing homes and, you know, all kinds of things that come with that. So that's my main concern.
Right. So that's going to have some effects on the city budget.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So what ideas do you have, do you think that the city should be doing to deal with the economic crisis that we'll be facing?
Yeah, you know, I think of my job, I think of government, and I think of myself, all in the same realm. When you talk about a budget, don't overcomplicate the budget. You have a set amount of money that you know, hopefully, in your roles, whatever those are, that comes in, and how you deal with that. Sometimes we lose jobs unexpectedly. When it comes to a budget for a city, obviously, the coffers will get affected by folks not being able to pay taxes, or companies not doing any work that you can tax presently. That's going to catch up with us. And I think for me, you tighten the belt. You make some vicious cuts sometimes when you have to, and you look at the things that keep our, what will keep our city running appropriately, but also enticing, I think what we're going to have to brace for is enticing, something to replace the things that were negatively impacted, which will in turn help our budgets in the future. So I don't, I can't see the future. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be running for commissioner probably if I knew the future, right? But then this, who knows? But in the same breath, I think we do need to kind of prepare for those things that we're going to need to plan for and hope for. I think hoping is the other side of all this, too, so.
Sure. Well, it's a time when, you know, during this pandemic, everybody's talking about coming together, working together, we'll get through this together. So considering that, do you think that it's the time to revisit the issue of combining city-county government to pool our resources?
That's a great, that's a great question, and one that my, again, my wife and I spend lots of time together. And I think there's some benefits to it from an infrastructure perspective. Decision-making perspective, I get a little bit more antsy about because we are a city within a county. You know, that happens quite frequently, but because we run our own form of government in this area, you know, there is some, I like the latitude we have with the decisions that we can make downtown versus the county. County has a different set of concerns that don't concern us, but infrastructure-wise, trash, you know, road maintenance, parks, things like that, those are all things that I think, yeah, we could pool our resources and appropriately handle and maintain during a time when we need to watch our money. So yes, I think that's one area. Otherwise, I'm okay with remaining as a city. Government.
Gotcha. Well, as a city government, we are under the city manager form of government. So under that form, what do you see as the role of the commission?
The commission's role is to, I think, monitor the pulse of the people and understand their concerns with relation to what's going on in the city, to hold folks accountable, like the city manager. Accountability is a big, is a big part of that. But conversely to that, not to get in the way of operating the day-to-day aspects of our city. It is really about the laws, the rules, the regulations, the things that we need to monitor to make our city successful. And it's probably a good time for me to say I'm about limited government. I'm not, I don't want more rules and regulations where they're not necessary. We've got plenty of law. We just need to enforce a lot of it, and I think we'll get through answering some of the things that probably don't need more rules. But of course, you look at those case-by-case basis, and that's what I see the commission's job as doing, so.
Okay, great. How do you think the city can improve communications with its people? Whether it's someone being able to easily report a pothole, or the city government publishing information about, say, I don't know, a public health information?
Yes.
Or anything in between? How can the communication between city government and the people be better?
Yeah, there, so I'm very happy this question came up because one of my projects that I'm pretty proud of was having to do with setting up a 3-1-1 solution, an IT solution. And there's no reason that more and more of these smaller communities like Frankfurt is, that it shouldn't be an expensive endeavor to offer. Folks grab a cellphone, they have a handheld computer in their hands mostly today. I know, I know not everyone, unfortunately, but I think a majority of us have the expectation to be able to interact with our government in the palm of their hand, literally. And unfortunately, we don't have that technology in Frankfurt, and I know price tends to be the prohibitive measure in that. But I don't think that's the case. Being an IT guy myself and having been part of projects that were successful on implementation, I think as we advance our technology, I think we're going to see a chance to bring that kind of technology into a small community like ours and benefit from it, where we can take a picture of a pothole and immediately send it to someone within the city, not just as an email, but creating a ticket, a service ticket that says, there's a pothole at the corner of Capitol and Third Street, or whatever it happens to be. And we need this, can you believe that this is happening? Let us know when it's fixed. And that stuff can happen like that, and it should be expectedly so. And that's part of the city manager's crew's job, really. At the end of the day, it's being mindful of the things we need to maintain in our city, and I think we should be supplying him the technology to do that successfully. So hopefully, that's something we can do.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
So we have exciting things going on downtown with parcels B and C. Frankfurt has a unique opportunity to facilitate some economic stimulus, especially now at a time where it's needed more than ever.
Yeah.
However, there is also the question whether the developer can find a viable way forward post-COVID. So what should city government do, if anything, to reduce the developer's risk in an effort to make the project successful?
I think a developer takes on the risks themselves. I don't think it's government's job to, you know, shield you from all risk, right? You're in a business where you go into it and risk, and there's an inherent risk to being a business owner, and understanding what you are setting out to do. A developer specifically looking for an opportunity to build buildings for restaurant use or, you know, homes and things like that. I have to believe that the studies were done and the research concluded that these parcels can sustain themselves. I wasn't part of that, unfortunately, you know, in to the nitty-gritty degree, but if someone says that it will support itself, I have to believe that that is what came out of that. If that's the case, you know the risks, right? So you know that you're pretty sure people are going to move in, or restaurants are going to move in, or stores are going to move into that space, and that should pay for itself at that point. It's not the, I just don't think it's the government's job to bail out business all the time. There are certain situations, but this isn't, in my mind, one of those.
Yeah. Well, you mentioned that you live downtown, as do I, and I have a child that goes to Second Street.
I do.
And so very interested to see what is happening on the Second Street corridor with the Tiger Grant that we got in 2016, an $8 million federal grant to reconstruct that area. Have you seen the plans? And how do you think about the planned improvements? And is there anything that you especially like, or anything specific that you might think needs to be changed?
Yeah, so I will, let me give credit where it's due. I think the communications on the Tiger Grant have been excellent. I don't know about you, but living downtown, I've received a couple of different letters across the timeframe that the Tiger Grant was in process, and explaining what it was intending to do, and what the goals were, and how much money they were hopeful for, and things like that. So being a part of it, even though I wasn't a part of it, getting, you know, the communication was very helpful to me as a citizen. And I became excited because I travel that corridor to go to my other fun job. I do IT during the day and tour guiding for Buffalo Trace at night, or during the weekends, I should say. So I make that turn, I go down that way. I like driving across the singing bridge. Call me old-fashioned, but I still enjoy it. So I go that way to do that. And also dropping my daughter off for kindergarten this year, and understanding the dynamics that are already starting to shift there, removing that, the lights, those can get aggravating, especially when there's not that much, when you really step back, there's not that much traffic, right? So the stop signs are a really nice added bonus. Walking, I love, I take my kids on nightly walks almost and bike rides. That's just a newer thing for us, but, and me, 41-years-old on a bicycle, still something I'm getting used to, but we enjoy it together. And to know that that will be a safe, safer area to do that in, I'm excited for that. I do think it's interesting that some shifts had already happened as it was going on, the loss of the pick pack and things like that. Those were, to me, negative. You know, we use the pick pack pretty routinely. I wish I was a better shopper down there, but I'm not the shopper guy in our household. So we would go frequently enough that it was a loss to us, and I would hope that maybe some of this grant can entice somebody to come down there, down here and offer, especially for those citizens that don't have the means to get across town, give them an opportunity to do shopping closer home, so.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Well, as we've seen with recent events, buying local is crucial to keeping our local economy healthy. So how would you work with the Chamber of Commerce or other groups to support local businesses?
Oh, I like this question, too. So I have never started a business myself. I've been part of upstarts, but I was part of a group, or we did different roles in the involvement of that. But one thing, I think, knowing our town is as artistic as it is, and I don't mean that negatively, I mean, or if there's any connotation to that, I love that we have a town in which we have artists, but when I say artists, I don't mean painters and photographers. We have that, too. But I mean people who value the land and are, you know, doing things with the market downtown. I would love to see us embracing the mushroom grower and the vegetable folks and the meat suppliers that we have locally. We have an interest in a unique town on a river, old setting where the capital. Why not embrace our roots, the artisanal side of us, right? That we say, we're really good at our farmer's market. And we do it, you know, Thursday, Saturday, we have these open, the open market. But what about using some of our downtown to offer a co-op, where not just, not to, not just sell your wares in terms of the goods you grow or make at home and then bring to the market, but bringing all those people together to then turn that into a pop-up restaurant that is part of our street, that's built on the backs of the folks that grow the stuff locally? I would love, I mean, I think that would set us apart and make us a destination place beyond what we are already. It's great to have the history. Hello, I'm a huge history buff. But it doesn't, it's not just history that, you know, pulls people into this town. We've got to have things that keep you here beyond that, and business is one of those. We have some amazing shops downtown that, you know, I think are growing even now, and we're going to see, I want to see more opportunity to have more of that kind of business that keeps people here.
That leads to my next question, which is about, and how can the city commission incentivize new business and industry to our community? And are there any specific changes in policy you would make to make Frankfurt more business-friendly?
So, yeah, I think to entice people, we need to have, it's an infrastructure thing, and I think it's also a setting thing. And what I mean by the infrastructure thing is, yes, we have parking garages. Are they awesome parking garages? One is relatively new, one is relatively old, and probably needs a little facelift of some kind to make people feel comfortable, you know, parking their vehicles in it. So yes, we have infrastructure, but street parking is kind of a challenge, I think. Right now, it's been quieter because of COVID, but I think if we ever did, let's say, we all of a sudden exploded with, you know, shops downtown to the degree that people were streaming into the city, we would struggle with parking as part of that. The one-way thing, I didn't necessarily agree with it because I park downtown, and I know the loss of that to me was, that's a big deal. I disagreed with that, but, and I have my reasons. So I stepped back for a second to answer the Coria question. I think we're starting to see, and I'm excited about the master plan in parts. I think the big one I'm watching happen right now even, the work being done on the building there at St. Clair and Main Street, the facelift, it's getting, I mean, we do that multiple times over, oh my gosh. I think that's the kind of thing that people go, yes, please, what a beautiful town. Not that we're not already, but even more so. And I think one of my platforms is code enforcement. We have a lot of dilapidation that just now arguably is starting to get turned around. And I, this is very near and dear to my heart, to go back to your earlier point about the app that I mentioned, we don't have anybody enforcing, and I've heard that unfortunately, we lost the code enforcement officers. And when you don't have code enforcement, people don't, okay, I'm not following your rules because no one's going to enforce it on me, so, all right? And I think we need to, I think we need to push that back and hold people accountable for, you know, dilapidation, literally, the dilapidating condition that some of the buildings are in, that needs to be made right. And if you're not enforcing it, we're not going to see a change. So I'm really, that's probably my top thing, is seeing that through, and really, the enforcement of the rules we already have in place. Just enforce those, and I think we'll see some turn, so.
Well, just following up on that, something isn't on my sheet, but something that I'm interested in is, say, living downtown, there's always been the question of people living downtown who can't afford to do the things that really need to be done. So where is the balance of being able to afford to do that, or just letting it go?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point, and, you know, I think there's some responsibility in homeownership or owning property in general. It's just inherent to, if you got into it and you can't maintain it, I struggle with that one. You know what it, no, go ahead, please.
Maintain it, or maintain it as far as historically, you know, historically, if you live in the historic district, I guess is what I'm.
Okay. The historic, I'm sorry, say again.
Which is different, I guess.
It is, yeah. I love history. I said that earlier. Let me preface all this. I joked the other night on one of our Meet the Candidate forums, you're aware of, I joked, I grew up in a house where antiques were loved and put in corners and on, like tchotchkes everywhere. It drove me nuts to the point that I am, I have zero of those, or very few, and if I have them, they serve a purpose, right? There are monuments, there are things that exist because they are there and they shouldn't be changed, and I agree with that. Just because something's old doesn't necessarily, to me, mean that it has a value beyond what it originally was intended to be. Meaning, if a building will serve a better purpose by getting gutted and some of that art, if there's artistic value within it, maintain that, or, you know, make sure that that's accounted for. But if it's to make a sound building and it's to make it a useful building that you can then invite people into, I much prefer to see that happen than us to put rules on, oh, you can't take that out, or you can't do this or that because the, it's old. Well, I struggle with that one. I still, I will always be one of those things, I don't know.
Well, two years ago, in the city commission race, the theme was our stagnant growth population here in Franklin County, and that Frankfurt needs to make a positive change to spur growth. Do you feel like the current city commission has made a positive impact in moving Frankfurt in the right direction? And what would you have done differently? Or what do you plan to do to spur growth?
Yeah, no, I think the master plan and just the general involvement of that, I think that's exactly, that we needed a little kick, right? And I think, I think they were doing a great job. And that, honestly, I think their job that they did caught my ear along the way, too, to keep me in Frank, you know, we had to, we really struggled with, we got two kids now, a boy and a girl, we don't have a big house, how are we going to make us all fit under one roof? Do we invest in our property and make it fit us all, or do we start looking elsewhere? And when we really thought about it, we got excited about the changes coming and the things that they were talking about two years ago, and seeing that kind of transpiring now, I think we got excited about it. So that's where my, the other half of, why did I get involved now, is because hearing this stuff, I want to be a part of that. And even if the commissioner thing doesn't work out for me, I'm excited to still be a participant in the future of our town and our city, I should say, and making sure we see this growth continue. I love that restaurants are coming downtown, that we're talking about doing something with the river and making it a walkable, usable space that people can have a reason to come down and enjoy beyond what it has been. I'm all for that, and I'm excited, so, yeah.
Our town has recently, our city has recently.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
Encountered problems with consistent recycling.
Yeah.
So what solutions do you propose for limiting the waste in our area that needs to be recycled or thrown away so that we can avoid future problems?
Yeah. So I've been a big recycler because my, the places I've lived have provided those services, and I care about that. When that went away, I felt that, too, and I started to kind of look into what's going on with this. And it's further upstream that the problem exists, and that's the thing I uncovered in kind of the research we did internally to our home, was to understand what happens when you recycle, right? Where does it go, really? And understand there was some China implications in terms of offloading some of our stuff that went overseas and that stopped. Understanding that that's way down this way, how can, in knowing that perhaps China won't ever take, you know, this may happen again, and we may run into issues, what do we do? And I think we have to make it something that someone can benefit from financially. If there's not a financial benefit to doing it, a business is not going to start from it, right? There's that, I think that's when the trade-off is, where does government get involved? Is there's some infrastructure that exists because it's good to have it, and someone knows how to do it, but they won't make money from it? So I think that is one of those spots where government can, yes, it's all, it's all the Benjamins at the end of the day, and I think if we can find, and my hope is, the smart people, smarter, much smarter people out there than me, who have ideas about what to do with plastics, metals, glass, all the above, paper, whatever it is, I'm hoping we'll get some excitement out of people that came up with a cool way to use that stuff differently, if it means melting it down or doing, I don't know, I don't have that answer. But hopefully, there's something out there that someone can come up with, so it'll be interesting, yeah.
We are running short on time, so I have a few questions that only require short answers.
Okay.
Do you support allowing chickens within city limits?
I do. I think it's exciting. I want fresh eggs, yes.
Would you support regulations on food trucks?
So I'm not in for regulations for regulation's sake. Safety first, obviously, my, I think, and that, to my point, if you're running a food truck, you should already be certified to serve food, right? So that's a regulation. Now, in terms of driving a truck, we've got certifications for that, too. Now, when you mix it all together and put it into a food truck, I don't, I wouldn't understand without seeing somebody's regulation that they think is necessary to separate it from a restaurant on wheels versus a restaurant that is brick and mortar, where you already have health code violate, or health codes that you could violate. And that is the thing that I think you hold accountable for a moving truck, a truck serving food out of it, so, yeah. Sorry, I got long-winded again.
That's okay. Where do you stand on the bicycle ban at Leslie Morris Park?
I love history. Said it three times now. I volunteered at the, I volunteered at the museum. I care about this town's unbelievable past, and I think, how cool is it that, not cool, wrong word, but a, a community that participated in a battle, right? Essentially, end of day, that's why there's so much history on that hill. The battle did not all happen across the entire hill. There are parts that are definitely pieces of that history. Obviously, I don't agree a bike should be on the ramparts themselves. I think that there's plenty of space to have bikes up there, and I just, I think if we have one more reason to get people to go up there, I'm all for that, because I want people to understand that this town participated in the Civil War itself. That's a pretty unique ability for a town to claim, so.
Well, the final question that I have for you is, some of the candidates have not been responding to the questions sent by the State Journal. If that includes you. If that includes you, why have you not taken this opportunity to make your views and ideas known to a wider audience?
Guilty as charged, I'm one of those. I started strong. March happened and in my role in IT, I got pulled in to some late nights, long weekends, things like that, that required my attention to getting not just our community, but our state out of the concerns around COVID. So I, I lost sight of my own personal emails and focused my attention on my, my day job. And it's not to say that I would let that happen on a routine basis, but these are weird times, right? If, if I was elected into the commissioner slot, of course, I have to balance the, my paycheck with the roles of the city commissioner. But in this particular case, family-first job and, and security of the people associated to that work I'm doing has to do with the COVID, the work to keep us moving forward even during this COVID thing. So that is the reason I did not answer. I do value the opportunity and I, I do intend to get back into the, into the last couple of weeks of responding as I can, so.
Great. Well, now it's your turn. I'm going to turn it over to you and you look directly in your camera, you talk to the voters, tell them why you're the best person for the job and why they should vote for you and tell them to vote.
Be careful with that. Last time I looked into people's eyes, I got married, so just be, just kidding. No, I, in all seriousness, you know, I, I'm running for this position because I care about our, our community. I care about the opportunity that it affords us as we move into the future of the city. I am, I, I'm passionate about what the decisions made now are going to help us in the near term and, and more importantly, the impacts these decisions have on my kids. And I know that there are others in the community that voice their concerns about their families and their situations. And in that role, I, I, you know, really intend to drive our, our city forward based on edu-, you know, making educated decisions in, in my experience across my lifetime, really at the end of the day. So I, I would love to have your votes. I have a social media account, which is crazy because I'm not a social media guy, but it is on Facebook and it's Will Prible for City Commissioner is the, the end of that Facebook tag there. So would appreciate your vote. I believe I'm third on the ballot, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate your time sitting down today because I know you're very, and I know that our viewers appreciate hearing from you.
And appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Kathy.
Sure. And to our viewers, let me remind you that voting is different this year. So right now, go to govoteky.com to request your ballot to vote. It's very important. We have more ways than ever this year to vote, so be sure to do it. Govoteky.com, go to it. And then check for, for up-to-date changes that we've had in our voting procedures. If you want to go vote in person, you can do that as well and we have that information. We're working with the county clerk's office to get that out there. So it's election season. You have from now until June 23rd to get it done. So get informed and then voice your choice. That is all for this edition of Meet the Candidates. We'll see you next time.